School Committee at 5:10, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I, um, do we have any citizens comments? I don't see anyone here, so.
I had something I wanted to say.
Okay, sure.
Can I say it from here?
Sure, yes.
So, oh, there's a mic.
Sorry.
So that's okay. So I'm Suze Thibel, I'm the kindergarten through grade five English Language Arts Curriculum Coordinator for the three elementary schools. And I just wanted to share with the committee that February 5th is World Read Aloud Day, where millions of people all over the world read and they read aloud and tell stories. And it's really to perpetuate the idea of reading is joyful and also to advocate for reading as a human right. And in the three elementary schools, we're going to be celebrating that day. All the schools are participating in different activities and we're going to have a Read Aloud Family Campaign. But one of the exciting parts is that the Hamilton Wenham Library, which is sponsoring their Bring Your Child to the Library Day on February 1st, is also joining with us to celebrate World Read Aloud Day on that day as well. So read aloud in your workplace, in your community, and with your families, and just enjoy the world of literacy.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody else have comment? Okay, so moving on, I guess we're going to start with, I will have Julie maybe start going through this since she knows a little bit better. I've been absent.
Sure, so tonight we are having a joint workshop with the full leadership team, as you can see, and the school committee to go over the tentative budget recommendation that was approved at our last school committee meeting by the five members who were in attendance. To get us started, this is a workshop, so it's going to be a little less formal. We'll present from the tables and we'll talk a little bit more about the protocol. But just as a way of breaking the ice and trying to get to know each other and mixing mingling a little bit, hopefully by now everyone has selected three emoji stickers that best describe how you're feeling about the budget development process. There are lots of changes this year to the budget development process internally and also in the way that we're presenting to the community, this being one of those examples in that we're having this joint workshop tonight and tomorrow so that we can really take a deep dive into the budget. So first, just a chance to kind of stand up, move around, greet some folks that you don't get to see every day and share with them what your story is based on the emojis that you selected. And then we'll have about five to 10 minutes to do this. We'll see how the room is feeling and we'll come back together and get started with the workshop. So go ahead and find two to three people that you don't see every day and share your budget story.
Congratulations.
First, you're standing.
Oh, no.
Senator.
Are you on?
Just happy and proud. For those at 100%.
So I'll share my emoji.
Budget, that the facilities.
Right.
It's an operation.
Yeah.
To get a hard one.
So, I have to say, I'm not going to say this. My nonsense is wonderful, we run a deal with that is just that our stars are showing. We're not having anything, just being transparent.
I'm a huge fan.
I was considering that.
We're enjoying together.
Not on the eyes.
Why don't you tell me where it's at?
Yes, it's floating.
Yep, this helps.
Excellent.
I don't have emojis, I just came running in after, after, uh, and just.
A little anxious.
Seven dollars.
The first I was like fully covered and I was like, I don't know if that it, and I was a little anxious.
Yeah, I mean, I think that so far already it's been a different process.
I mean, not to say that our scenes were wrong.
Important to hear that it's not as transparent as it has been because I'm like, come on, how much more can it be at this point? But yeah, I mean, just the fact that we're already together, you know, it's a.
Where am I?
That was all represented in those.
Those are mine.
Okay.
If I'm presenting the kids.
I don't see that one.
I'm presenting the kids. But, uh. We have. So what we're doing is we're just putting emojis.
Yeah, I know. I could face it.
I'm happy to present 100% of the budget.
Really positive, Frank.
Get the left numbers. So I should just blindly take three emojis and then try and come up with a story.
Everything. My, um, tax. Hi. I know. All right. Well, these two go together. So I didn't even know what to say at the beginning of this one.
You went for like highlight next.
Hey, into this, it looks, we don't live in the areas of my dad. Then I got really sad when I saw that. We got that in your person, so we might not be able to get this. Hoping.
What do you got here?
We pay her for a lot of it.
I just wanted to. I thought I'd make it. Oh, perfect life, better.
Do you have any gifts? I am happy and I have to say this. All you guys.
Yep.
See facilities. This is my special ed world that I live in, but I'm going to be happy. So I'm curious. How long? I am, my end have. So my.
What am I?
Oh, yeah.
So yeah. I'm late because.
I feel like.
Yeah, so there'll be a lot more of this. A lot more of this.
So I'm hoping often that kind of like comes up.
I did, uh, a lot of celebrations for these years.
My, my. So on my. So. Can we see each other?
But this is a fun exercise. Now, my name.
Come on, let's go around the square.
City Year Board Meeting, I always forget to bring it. I always leave it in my car. I forget it. Always leave it in my car. And then I'm never hard to say where the meeting is. You find it at my desk. Unfortunately, all stuff is in my building. Even if I forget it in my desk, it's. Make a trade, you know, a lot else, it gets scary.
But I'm happy with IT right now because my son had an accident, I'd see to care for him.
They do a great job.
They do. No, but he has his own laptop. He's doing, uh, uh, exchange student. Knocked over and crashed his whole screen, so we may have to buy another laptop. Oh. She said that they took camera with the camera.
Okay. It's good.
So what do you have for emojis?
Yes.
Sorry, Boris, I did mine.
That's all I felt when I saw it. And I wanted to kind of hide from it a little bit. Yeah. Like, wow.
I got to see that one and I got that one.
Yeah. A little anxiousness right now, I see where this goes. Maybe a couple of days.
I'm hoping someone will say, jump over the table for me and tell me I don't know what I'm doing. That was last year. Are you kidding me? I can ask questions. We'll head back to our seats. So.
Once you've had a chance to have three conversations, please head back to your seats.
So then, no matter what we decide, the sun will come up next year and school's going to open. Brian's got the sun coming back on. This got jazz hands. There was no baby emojis, this is the most thing my wife is doing, her first born today.
So, oh my gosh. A little crazy with all this going on.
You didn't move?
Oh, the left there, she's showing us pretty well. We're fighting for.
But it seems better your life.
Yeah.
Kids in the second. What can the channels take, so she comes in and says, I see him, like, oh my gosh. Oh, because this is where the school committee is, so it's right straight ahead. Does he do well? Isn't it hard? No, right, that's what I said, no faces.
Find the rainbow. And it's down, it's part of gold.
Because the sun will come out tomorrow.
Right.
I like that bright.
Yeah, we live, uh. Oh, wait. Yeah.
It's very hopeful at the end. Right, right. Your last emoji was very hopeful.
All right, how did you guys like that activity?
I might not be able to make it.
Good way to kind of get us started. So tonight, we're going to start by sharing our leadership team norms. Rather than taking the time together to craft new norms, we just brought to you, the school committee, the norms that we use every other week when we come together as a leadership team. These are also the norms that we follow during our cabinet meetings. So the first one says that we will start and finish on time, be respectful of each other, meaning no emails or phone calls, one person speaking at a time, and using I statements. We'll also work to feel free to express information and different opinions, knowing that it will remain, in this case, not confidential because we are communicating with our public. Today, we would just adjust this norm to say, knowing that we're aiming to be really transparent and honest about what our needs are and what our asks are in this budget. Have an action agenda that keeps the district's mission at the center. Make decisions based on the needs of all of our students. Challenge the status quo. Invite all opinions to be shared and remember that learning is fun. And so in this case, well, you'll all be learning about our budget and get a chance to hear from our leadership team. Last week, you had a chance to hear directly from Vinnie and I and we gave you an overview and shared with you some of the new investment proposals. Today, we're going to take a deeper dive and we're going to use this protocol to guide us. As you see in front of you, you have an annotated agenda. This is really designed to keep us on track so that we can honor that first norm of finishing on time. So we're going to have two departments that will present. And while, so for example, the high school's going to present first and we'll all listen to their presentation jotting notes as they're speaking. So it might be a question you have or noticing, or you might be wondering about something they're speaking about. So you can jot that right on your slide notes that you have in your packet. And then after the middle school presents, we'll take a pause and we'll ask questions. So we're sort of batching the questions. You'll hear two presentations, then we'll have a Q and A. And then we'll take a break as we need it. If we're feeling like we're good to go, we can, you know, have a longer, we can have a shorter break. If we feel like we need, you know, some bathroom breaks and things like that, we can always have a longer break. So again, this is a workshop, different than a business meeting. No actions that we're actually asking to be taken tonight, but instead just really trying to bring you along and take a deep dive into the budget. So that'll be our protocol. We'll remind you of that again before we get started with the individual school conversations.
So some of our objectives for tonight are to maximize our time with the school committee in order for them to greater understand our FY21 tentative budget. We're going to review our FY20 budget and its return on investments while also reviewing what is included in this year's tentative budget and what is also not included.
Another objective that we have for tonight is that you'll walk away with some talking points and critical message that you could be sharing with our community. We talked about that a little at our last meeting and we're just trying to build that toolkit so that we can all be ambassadors of our needs this year. So the first few slides are going to look familiar and the reason why we do this is really for all of our benefit, but also to know that different members of our community might be joining the conversation at different points. And so we really want them to have the context before we dive into the conversation tonight. So just reminding everyone that on July 18th, we received notification that the school district was projected to experience a budget deficit of $638,000. Vinnie and I took the next several months after receiving this to deeply understand what the needs of the district were and to implement a couple of strategies to try to mitigate this forecast the best that we could. And so later on in the year.
Later on in the year, we updated the forecast on October 16th. The deficit then was approximately $310,000. This reduction was mainly due to staff turnover, reduction in FTEs, and hiring new staff at a lower step in scale than we had previously budgeted for. This was mainly seen in the administration and teachers line. During that presentation, we had three major categories that were still in motion. The first and biggest one always being out of district placements. Then and still currently, we have 12 pending placements that could range anywhere from $600 to a little less than a million dollars. In addition to that was health insurance. At the time, was still open enrollment for our new staff hired in September. We have all that data back and right now there are approximately 15 more employees on our health insurance than we previously budgeted, which has resulted in additional $110,000. In addition to that is always employee leaves. This changes month to month depending on maternity leaves, paternity leaves, and medical. So at the time, we had $310,000 deficit, but come next week, I'm going to give an update for the forecast ending December, which you'll see the additional $110,000 in health insurance. So since then, we've implemented a curtailment in an effort to conserve spending. I think the leadership team came up with approximately $200,000 in spending. And in addition to that, we will continue to monitor student needs and the impact on our budget. And about every other month, every month, we meet with the capital and finance committee to go over the budget with them. And next week, we'll also be requesting budget transfers as part of our forecast update.
Later on in the spring, once we have a clearer sense of where we are in terms of the projected deficit, we'll make a recommendation for some reconciliatory acts. Reconciliatory actions.
So just to remind everyone what this all means. It means that just starting out with the FY21 budget, we are already 2.3% behind. So automatically, what we're, what we're asking in our tentative budget includes the 2.3% that wasn't budgeted for in FY20.
So we've spoken to you several times about the leadership team budget development process. One of the things that we heard really early on was that the process, there was a strong desire both inside the school district and around the community to have a more collaborative process and we've worked to implement that this budget cycle. We also are really aiming to increase our transparency and being really honest with the community about what it is that we need and why we need it, while also working to be fiscally responsible and under. And so, of course, that puts the students right at the center while also aiming for the budget to be very fiscally responsible. We work together to prioritize our resources from pre-K to 12. That was a very important goal for us this year. And then, also to provide those required and appropriate services that are based on student needs. And this is really to ensure that we're providing the best educational outcomes for all. That means putting things in the budget that we know are going to happen, and it also means accounting for some of the unknown knowns, which we'll talk a bit more about over the next two days. We have increasing enrollment demands in our pre-K to 1 grades, so this budget allows us to respond to that, and we had to think really deeply about how to prioritize those things while also maintaining our existing programs and ensuring that all staff and students feel safe each and every day. We also were trying to expand our early intervention supports and services in order to better meet the needs of our students right here in their home district while continuing to protect our most valuable resource, our human resource. So, developing a budget that allows us to support the 300-plus employees and ensuring the maximum return on that investment, as that is the largest part of our budget.
So, again, the biggest challenges that have faced us for the FY21 budget is again, the 2.3% increase over the FY20 budget. Our contractual obligations referring to the steps, lane changes, and colas require an additional 4.9% over FY21, 20, excuse me. We have an increasing pre-K population, and we also are experiencing developmental, socially-emotional, and behavioral needs of students that require specialized services and placements. And like always, our facilities are aging, and we require routine maintenance costs. And more needs and investment proposals have been submitted that we have not been able to meet.
Guys, can you give me one second? I just want to officially open the school committee meeting.
I already did.
I know, but we didn't have a quorum. So, now that we have a quorum, I wanna just make sure that we're sort of backing up so we can have a discussion without being in. So, I got it 5:35, or 5:37 by that clock. I have 5:31 on mine, just to cover our bases. Thank you, though. All you had to do was open the meeting.
That's right. Thank you. Okay, so that outlines both some of our goals in developing this budget and also the challenges that we faced. As you can see, we are not short on challenges this year. So, when it comes to the overall operating budget, this picture just really gives you a high-level overview. So, you can see in the first line there, what are the operating expenses? And we're comparing this to the FY20 approved budget. Remember, this is not the FY20 reality that we're living every day, and that is a huge driver for why the percent increase is so high here.
In addition, our expense offsets have gone up roughly 32%. This is, this is due to the additional third pre-K classroom. We collect revenues off of this. That's mainly what drives the increase of 32%. After that, you remove your revenues, which we are calculating at approximately $4,486,000. This is mainly due to increase in chapter 70 funding. After you remove your expense offsets and your revenues, you're left with the net operating budget. This is what we assess the towns at, and this is projected to go up approximately 13% over FY20. So, tonight, you're gonna hear the presentations from the leadership team that will be based off the site location seen here. Over the next two nights, you'll hear from each site's major stakeholder. When the school committee votes on the budget, they vote in terms of the DESI category. But here tonight is each member of each site that will present what's in their budget and what's not.
So, again, just to remind us of the norms and the protocol. We're going to hear the high school present. They'll have approximately 20 minutes to share both their return on investments, their FY20 asks, and then the unmet needs. And we're each gonna be jotting down our questions as they go. Then, the middle school will present, and we'll jot questions as they share the same similar types of information. After both presentations are completed, we'll have an open question and answer. School committee members can ask questions directly of the principals and the team members here. Also, leadership team members can share insights as well. Any questions about the protocol itself before we get started? Okay, and again, you have the slides in your packet that you can use for jotting notes as we go. So, first, I would like to introduce Principal Eric Tracy to share with us some information about the high school.
Thank you, and I have with me tonight Associate Principal Brian Manigoni. He'll be helping out this evening as well. We really wanted to talk about some of the previous investments that have been made through the budget process and celebrating some of those successes. One of our, our most recent, probably largest successes has been the RISE program. We all are wrestling with student social-emotional needs across the curriculum, both in and out of school. And this program has been able to really meet the kids' needs, and it's gone above and beyond that. It's meeting kids' needs where they may have a concussion, and they're out for a few days, and the RISE program can help them to get back on track. They may, you know, have a family emergency where they're gone for a week. The RISE program can step in and help them to get back on, on track. Anytime when a student loses significant school time, the RISE program is able to be utilized so that these students can alleviate their stress a little bit so that they're not trying to figure out how to manage all seven of their classes over the number of days they've been out. So, the RISE program really helps them to manage and organize and meet those needs. There's also a therapeutic component with a counseling portion in there for students who need some assistance with that along the way. It's a safe space for kids to go during the school day. It's also a space where kids can go and get some academic support during the school day where they might not likely have it. RISE stands for resilience, independence, support, and empowerment. The program has basically doubled since it began in service to students, continues to grow and meet the needs of many of our students at the high school. This past year, we moved all of our community service to an electronic platform that integrates extremely well with our Naviance platform. All of our families and students use Naviance for the college process and some of the, the kind of learning about yourself process along the way, if you will. And we thought this would be a great idea to take our paper-based community service, which was not super reliable. Now, we have this X2VALL platform that links right with Naviance. Students can keep track of their hours right within that program. But bigger than that, somebody from the outside can be given access to X2VALL to set up a community service opportunity for, for kids. So, for example, Accord, the director of Accord will go into X2VALL and say, "I have an opportunity this weekend. I need 10 kids to do this, this, and this, and it'll be this many hours." Kids can go in and select that opportunity. It gives the kids a spot, a known spot, and a place to go. It also gives Accord a list of the kids that will be there and be in attendance, and they can always come back in at the end and check off the kids that actually showed up. So, it's streamlined a lot of things for us and for our students, and it's been very useful in keeping track of the hours. As we know, students require, are required to have 50 hours before they graduate of community service. SRO, I can't even begin to list all the advantages that we have now with having Kent Richards with us in the schools. Been integral in avenues as simple as checking up on maybe some electronic issues between kids, working with parents outside of school, trying to help with neighborhood issues that may roll into school, working with our care team as a member of our care team, and working on ways to help students who may be in need, being in classrooms, teaching classes, just being around to answer questions, simple questions. Sometimes, kids have these questions that will bug them all day about something simple like their license, or their parking spot, or whatever, and can just, you know, quickly answer that, and kids can move on without any worry. He's also a trainer for the Alice program. He and I have done all of the trainings at the high school for the staff and all the students. And it's been huge to have him there because with, he and I have very different perspectives, although some similar. But we, we have been able to come at it from multiple avenues, kind of from the educator and the law enforcement avenue to say, this is what happens when you're on the education or academic side. Here's what happens when law enforcement comes into an issue or a problem. So, it's been extremely helpful to have him there. Kids know where he is. Kids know how to access him. He, he, you know, he and I talk at night. We respond to issues at 8 o'clock at night, 9 o'clock at night, 10 o'clock at night. So, he's been available and ready and willing, and it's been, it's been a huge asset for us at the high school. And then, we also introduced over the last two years, a language-based, special ed language-based program, which we had not had at the high school, to service our students with language-based disabilities. And also, a therapeutic program to again, help out with our growing need for really SEL services for our special ed students. We are working to develop programs that help to keep kids in regular ed classrooms as much as possible with the supports in these programs that they can lean on to, to help them meet with success.
So, we're very proud of all the work that we've done up to this date, but we recognize that we have to continue to grow and evolve if we're going to, year after year, offer our students really supportive experiences. So, the FY21 budget, one thing that we would like to add in is an after-school academic support program. There's a real gap there right now. When school gets out at 2:20, students really leave, and we don't have much leverage to support them, mainly because we don't have an adult who can stay after school with them and provide the organizational and planning supports that I think a lot of kids really are in need of. So, next year, we would be looking to add an after-school program where a licensed teacher would be there three days a week to work with our students for about an hour each day. Like I said, it really would focus on that organization and planning that is very important to being successful in high school. It also allows us to leverage the late bus program that we do have. Every Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, there's a late bus that goes to Hamilton and to Wenham. So, we should take better advantage of that resource and couple that with a teacher who can work with identified students who are in need of this program. Second thing that we're looking for in the FY21 budget is to begin a biotechnology class. Biotechnology certainly is a growing field, not only nationally, but also here in Massachusetts. The life science industry has a strong foothold even in our own region, right around Hamilton-Wenham. So, we want to be able to give our students an experience with biotechnology, and we currently have the staff to handle that. But one thing that you need to begin a class like this is equipment and some space. So, we're looking to add that for next year. The nice thing about this biotechnology class is that it's in elective, so it will fit into students' schedules. But we're also looking at adding multiple entry points for students in that same class, which really means it's gonna be accessible to everyone. It's meant for juniors and seniors because they need a little bit of a knowledge base. But again, we're really looking to allow as many students as possible to take that class because it's a great opportunity for all students. And finally, our Mandarin program will make it to the senior year next year. So, we will be offering Mandarin 5 starting next year. So, our 12th graders will have completed four years of Mandarin in the high school at the end of the 2020-2021 school year. And we're also looking at, for the first time, adding an honors program to Mandarin. Spanish does currently have an honor selection for students, so we will be adding that into Mandarin 4 and Mandarin 5 next year. But we won't be adding different sections of Mandarin to do this. We'll be having honors and college prep program running during the same class period in the same classroom. So, that way, we are able to manage the schedule a little bit better. But we are excited to finally be offering the final year of Mandarin next year.
So, Brian talked about the biotechnology equipment, and we were recently given the 5,500 that we were looking for by the Ed Fund about two weeks ago to offset that cost, which is, is a big deal. And the equipment itself, as you, as you know, if you've read the accreditation report, I know you just received it, but some of the, you know, the equipment that we have at the high school is really not up to snuff. So, this will help us to get some equipment that we can use in bio and biotechnology. The $30,000 media communication lab is really to fill the void where H.W. Kim is moving out of the high school, the TV studio that really hasn't been available to students for a few years. But communication still is a viable option for our kids when they go off to college. So, we are working this year to develop a low-level media communication lab and classroom where kids are taking advantage of all the devices we have, such as iPads, cell phones, and other computers, excuse me, Mac computers to do basic filming and editing, and really working media like they would as a reporter on the street. If you go to New York City, you may run into someone on the street with a selfie stick and a microphone, really doing their own newscast. There's a lot of freelancing going on like that now where people are getting to spot, hotspots, doing a quick story, and then selling them back to the networks. That way, they can make a living if they can hit enough and get enough play on, on the air during the day. And these options are available to our kids as they, as they get into college and look at media communications, things like advertising and radio and things like that. So, this gives us another avenue to service kids. The second, the third piece is a health-specific teacher for the high school. As you know, we're constantly battling those, you know, the health battles like vaping and, and, you know, alcohol and drugs. And we're trying to work more closely with our students to discuss these options and opportunities that they have and then how to best meet their needs in the area of health. Right now, we do health and PE together, and the discussion with Danielle Petrucci and her staff is really, they're, they're trying to figure out a way to get more health and health knowledge into the area of our kids. So, it becomes an issue in, in this budget because certainly, it's difficult to add a teacher. We're, we're gonna look at other ways that we might be able to pull that off. We have been experimenting over the past year and a half, two years, with our guidance counselors being inserted into physical education and health classes. That's been a little bit difficult because of the way the schedule works, but we'll continue to, to work that out. And then, the final thing is the inability to meet building and facility needs that are outlined in the accreditation report. Right now, we do not meet one of the six foundational standards required for accreditation. And the one, one of three, we don't meet, but the biggest one is the facility and building. And these options are available to our kids as they, as they get into college and look at media communications, things like advertising and radio and things like that. So this gives us another avenue to service kids. The second, the third piece is a health-specific teacher for the high school. As you know, we're constantly battling those, you know, the health battles like vaping and alcohol and drugs. And we're trying to work more closely with our students to discuss these options and opportunities that they have and then how to best meet their needs in the area of health. Right now, we do health and PE together and discussion with Danielle Petrucci and her staff is really, they're trying to figure out a way to get more health and health knowledge into the area of our kids. So it becomes an issue in this budget because certainly it's difficult to add a teacher. We're going to look at other ways that we might be able to pull that off. We have been experimenting over the past year and a half, two years, with our guidance counselors being inserted into physical education and health classes. That's been a little bit difficult because of the way the schedule works, but we'll continue to work that out. And then the final thing is the inability to meet building and facility needs that are outlined in the accreditation report. Right now, we do not meet one of the six foundational standards required for accreditation. And the one, one of three, we don't meet. But the biggest one is the facility and building needs that we have. For example, coming into a science lab, they're about half the size they should be. The equipment is fairly outdated. We get generally used equipment when we can from some of the local tech corporations. But some of the equipment we'll buy, we don't have the capacity to keep up with that. We do get some push from the Ed Fund to get some up-to-date equipment. But usually, it's one thing that you can't share across seven classrooms in a day. So this will be an issue that will impact us now and into the future as we look towards accreditation and meeting the tenants of accreditation in two thousand twenty-one when the decennial team comes for their visit. They will come, review our reporting, our self-reflection, our collaborative conference report, and then ask the question, what did you do between two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one to start to address this issue? So that will come up during the decennial visit. Doesn't mean we won't get accredited, but it will make it a little bit sticky at that time where we'll have to come up with a plan of action for the future.
Okay, so take a few moments just to jot any questions that you have or thoughts about the high school as the middle school prepares to present. Remember, we'll have the Q and A section after the middle school. Okay, I'll turn it over to Principal Hubby of the Miles River Middle School.
Great, thank you. I'm here tonight with Liz Lovell, the assistant principal at the middle school. And I'm actually going to turn it over to her to start us off. As we talk about our school-wide PBIS rollout, Liz, as well as Chrissy De Lima, are co-leading our PBIS work at the middle school and have done an outstanding job. So I want to make sure she gets an opportunity to talk about it.
Thank you. The PBIS stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. And this is a research-based program that allows a team of teachers from our school to take a process and tailor-make it for our school's particular needs. We are in year two of a three-year process. And this year, we're looking to implement the work that we did the first year. The first year, we created our core values. You can see in the slide, in the transparency, you can see a bit where it says, we are a community of learners, we are safe, we are responsible, we are considerate. And establishing these values in the first year has allowed us to, this year, embed that language in our classroom instruction, in our individual conversations with students, and in our corrective conversations with students as well. It's given us a consistent vocabulary to use when talking with students. The program as a whole provides that consistency in language and expectations throughout the school, which binds us together as a community and grows our school culture. So we're experiencing great progress and I'm very excited to see the rollout for the rest of this year.
Thank you, Liz. I need to echo much of what, or pretty much everything that Eric mentioned about the school resource officer. The middle and high school share a campus and we share a number of issues when there is an issue that needs to be addressed. The school resource officer, Kent Richards, has been an outstanding partner and asset. We communicate daily. He has helped us communicate with parents who have anxieties or concerns, with students. He is a presence in the hallway that is a calming presence for our students as well as our staff. He has helped us tremendously in our training of students and staff and rolling out our Alice protocols, as well as evaluating other emergency protocols. And I just can't say enough about what a great resource he has been for the middle and high school. So I'll leave that. We are extremely fortunate at Miles River to have an outstanding arts program. All of our students experience and participate in the arts each year regularly in their schedules. They participate through a music class, a drama or public speaking class, as well as a visual arts class each year, which helps build the skills and experiences. Many of our students participate in band and chorus during the school day. And we have a tremendous array of after-school activities, including the musical, which, by the way, if you're not doing anything Thursday night, Friday night, or Saturday afternoon, I highly recommend you go see Matilda at the Farini Dramatic Center. It's going to be an amazing production. We have a one-act play, which is written, performed, and directed, scripted by students and performed at a state competition where they've won many awards. We have after-school band, jazz band, jazz combo, guitar club, art club, chorus, corral, a cappella, and seems like there's always just kids doing art stuff around the building. So that is an incredible asset to both our school and our community. This past year, we started a Spanish exchange program for eighth graders. So we had twenty-one students participating in a reciprocal exchange where they hosted students in August, the very beginning of the school year, and they traveled to Spain in, was it February? February vacation, I believe. Yep. And the feedback that I received from both sides, as well as parents and students, was outstanding. There's no better way to learn a language and experience it than to visit another culture. We continue to work on developing and refining our curriculum in all of our curricular areas. But some of the big work that's going on is we are realigning our sixth and seventh grade social studies curriculum to better match the new state standards. And we are beefing up and enhancing our eighth-grade civics curriculum. We're in a fortunate position that we have an eighth-grade civics curriculum, which is now a state requirement. Many school districts did not have civics in eighth grade, so we're ahead of the curve there. And I personally believe that it's the perfect time to start engaging our students in civics action. We're also working on building in a civics action project. So we'll see where those end up. They should be very interesting, and I'm looking forward to having our students engage with the community. Our math curriculum, we are in the second year of our illustrative math. And the depth of conversations and learning that is going on with our math students continues to impress me. And our science curriculum, we're in our third year of STEM Scopes. And we're seeing that bridge down to the elementary where our students are coming up with different sets of skill, or enhanced sets of skills than where we were a few years ago. So I think we've made significant strides in all of those curricular areas, and we continue to work on them. The budget last year allowed us to add some after-school activities, which can expand our roster of after-school activities through the collective bargaining agreement. So we added a Gender and Sexualities Alliance, or GSA, at the middle school. And one was added at the high school as well. This was something that was lacking at the middle school, I know. Over the summer and the course of last year, I got requests from several students, as well as parents, to build one in, and it's an incredibly powerful way to support our students' social-emotional development. We added an after-school a cappella group for singing and a cooking club, which has produced some delicious things. Kim Adsett runs that, and she is outstanding at teaching kids to cook. It also allowed us to expand our intramural coaching supports. In a lot of cases, the previous bargaining agreement only allowed for one staff member per sport. And we would have things like track where we might have forty or fifty kids, but we were only stipended for one position, which is a difficult thing to do when you need to be in eight places at once. So the restructuring of that allows us to be more flexible in those supports. Our building is, as you know, the youngest building in the district. It's just paid itself, or gotten paid off, it didn't pay itself off. But the bond for our building was paid off, so we're a little over twenty years old. But there are, the learning is different than it was even twenty years ago when this building was built. So I fully understand that we're not getting any major renovations to the middle school anytime soon. So one of the goals that we're working towards is maximizing every bit of space in that building for different learning opportunities. So we, to do that, we have painted a number of walls as green screens on the stage in the multipurpose room, in the tiny little hallway next to the gym, and elsewhere around the building. We've built a series of counters in the multipurpose room, which have been great for lunchtime, as well as different student engagement areas. We added some existing furniture to a nook that was under the staircase. It's not as bad, it's not like Harry Potter. It actually fits a table and chairs. And we've got high-top tables around the building. We want students to learn, and when you, you know, it's an if you build it, they will come type of scenario. If you go into any of our elementary schools, you see the same thing. You see soft furniture in different places to maximize the learning environment. So our students appreciate that. The FYI, in the FYI twenty-one budget, we did not have any significant new asks. We, as a, met as a district and understand the priority, we prioritized across the board what is really needed at this time. But this budget does allow us to maintain a team-based model, which is the best model for our adolescents. It creates small communities of learning. It helps meet the social-emotional needs of adolescents because our kids get to know adults and adults get to know kids, and that's so critical at this age. And it allows our teachers to collaborate both within their disciplines and across disciplines. So we're seeing increasing interdisciplinary work, as well as great work together on the same curriculum. Some of the continued curriculum development and refinement that is in this budget is replacing a number of our outdated social studies resources. If you were to access some of those, you would find countries that no longer exist and be missing some new countries that do exist. And it's not the best way to be teaching what's going on currently in the world. We're also working to build our student agency by expanding reading choice in our English Language Arts Program, so that not everyone has to read the same text at the same time. But to do that, we want to be able to provide a variety of texts. And finally, we're working towards administering something called the Stamp Proficiency Test, or Stanford-based measure of proficiency. And that's an eighth-grade world language assessment that measures how students are on the actful language progression. So are they novice, intermediate, advanced? And where are they in the different categories of speaking, listening, reading, and writing? It's frankly, I think, a better way than just providing them with a letter grade. And we've had conversations, though I can't say that we have made any solid decisions, on utilizing that information for high school placement, so that you might be placed in a different level depending on where your proficiency is. The budget also allows us to continue to provide professional development for our staff, which, you know, if we're going to continue to bring in best practices, we need to send our teachers out and bring in those people who know what those best practices are. In the areas of unmet needs, and none of these were put in the budget, we want to continue increasing our social-emotional supports. Middle school has always been a tough time socially and emotionally. It's becoming more and more difficult, in my mind, with added pressures of society, grades, you name it. So one of the things that we are looking at is expanding the RISE program from the high school down to the middle school, so that we can provide supports akin to that. We are looking for next year at providing some training with the company that does RISE, or the organization that does RISE, with our middle school staff. These are some budget-neutral ideas, as well as working with the existing high school staff on that program to bring some strategies down. But to fully implement a program, it would require an additional staff member. We don't have the staffing capacity at the middle school at this time to provide that person. We need to develop a long-term technology strategy for the middle school. This would also reach up to the high school. Right now, the, you know, students get iPads in high school. We don't have a one-to-one device program at the middle school. We do have carts of Chromebooks. We have one cart of iPads, and we have two computer labs. So all told, that's about three hundred and thirty devices. We have about four hundred students. So it's almost a one-to-one, but just the allocation of those resources is not ideal. And, you know, a Chromebook is not always the best tool, or laptop, iPad's not always the best tool. So I don't have the answer to this, but I do know that if we're going to be looking at technology, we need to have a comprehensive plan moving forward. It's going to involve a lot of stakeholders because it will likely be an expensive plan. And we're going to continue to expand our use of learning spaces. So three years ago, we converted one of the computer labs off of the library into the collaboratory, which is our Makerspace. It's been extremely, it took a little bit of time to ramp up use as people weren't quite sure what to do with it. But now, it's fully booked, and it's being used not only by the middle school, but the high school. And we're running into some limitations. For example, there is no water or drain in that space. So if you're doing an extensive painting project with no water and no drain, it can be complicated and messy with buckets. We also would love to improve ventilation, so that we can improve the offerings that we give in there. And we're in initial stages of talking about expanding into that whole side of the library and making a comprehensive middle-high school space that would be of a larger use. So that's something I think can grow, and would love to see, love to see us improve that. The bandroom at the middle school is, looks great. It's, you know, seems nicely set up for a lecture, but it is actually a terrible design for pretty much everything, including band. You can't sit on one of the risers and have a music stand in front of you. You have to put the music stand at a separate level. Not to mention that there is really no band in the world that performs in a stadium seating. They're pretty much all on one level. So the vision we have for that is to remove those risers, refinish the room, and then that would give us an enormous flexible space for meetings, for group work, for almost anything. If we could outfit it with a large projector and some flexible furniture, it would create a very variable learning environment. The other piece is an outdoor space. We are blessed with good weather some of the year, and it would be great to take advantage of that in an outdoor learning capacity. And then finally, flexible furniture. We're sort of making do around the building with the furniture we have, but the hard plastic chairs and hard, I don't even know what those things are made out of, but they're weigh about ten pounds each. We can do better, but those, that flexible soft furniture does cost some money. So we're looking to keep adding to that as we can and build more flexible and comfortable learning environments for our students.
Thank you, Craig and Liz. So before we open it up for question and answer, I'll give you just a few minutes to jot your thoughts about the middle school, if you haven't done so already. And then, David, do you prefer questions to go through the chair, or how do you want to do the question part?
I'm going to move, I'll move the mic over to David Polito to be the chair now.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think this needs to be our meeting.
Okay, so it can be informal?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any questions, things you noticed, things you're wondering about?
I have a question, and I should have asked it maybe before when you asked if we had questions. On one of, I have several questions for high school, middle school, but first, Vinnie talked about the out-of-district placements, that there's twelve pending. Would that bring us up to seventy-plus students for the special education or out-of-district placement?
Yes.
Okay.
We're close to. I think we have two students, one who just graduated, who's placed out, and one who is graduating or did just graduate this month. So I think we would be maybe plus or minus seventy, but close to.
Okay, are we starting to look at this and try and figure out?
Yeah, we are studying this deeply. We have multiple district goals and projects underway, including we've been, Vinnie and I last week have been going out of, going to visit programs out of district and observing our kids out of district as our contracts allow us to do, while also looking at both the general education and special ed. while also looking at both the general education and special education processes. So we're deeply involved in studying this.
Okay.
I did notice in the accreditation report that you provided to us, Eric, that we are above the state average for special education.
Yes.
I mean, and just, we have to educate all of our children. But just, any thoughts of why we are at a higher level, or just, just where we are, right?
Yeah, it's hard to say. I mean, we, we look at everything. We look at kids from our communities, we look at choice kids, we start to try and figure out ways, but it really, it really just seems to fall that way. Most of the kids that come through the special ed program come through our school system. So it's, it's, it's really hard to say, we can reduce this number by doing this. There's, there's nothing that you could, you know, wave a magic wand at. And we've tried to build programs to meet the needs. I think through this budget process, you see we're trying to meet the needs at the, at the earlier grades, so that we can maybe, excuse me, dissipate those numbers as kids travel through K to 12.
It really is going to take a multi-pronged approach. And, but we do know, the research is really clear. The earlier we intervene, the better results we have and the more successful kids are able to be in the least restrictive environments. So what we're trying to do in this budget is make some incremental investments that allow us to not only manage what the current reality is, but also put some more proactive measures in place.
I know that your, your budget increased by 6.69 percent. And there was a couple of things, and I know you were looking for, to add to science. I just noticed increases in, like, social study materials, like 238 percent, and fine arts, 56 percent, and science, 714 percent. So it just, I'm trying to find out where exactly those, what's going on, those three areas.
So a number of those can be attributed to the combination of lines. Some of the lines were combined. Social studies, for example, was, is really due to the work that we need to do to meet the new standards that were released and trying to reshuffle our programs. That's going to be textbook costs, that will be curriculum costs, you know, time basically re-coordinating the entire social studies curriculum. And Krista, our curriculum leader, is, is working six through 12, so that's where that is. Science is, again, another one that some numbers shifted around from other line items. They were combined together to bump those, to make them look like increases. They're really same numbers that were spread across five lines or four lines down into one or two.
I know Vinnie kind of gave us, you know, changed some things around to make things align with the DESI category. So I understand that. So it makes it hard to compare from last year to this year.
It absolutely does.
I mean, last year that we're planning budgets to this year. So just, you know, some of the numbers, when you see that kind of increase, it just kind of goes, you go, oh my.
Yep. And they're, they're, they're really programmatic costs, like, things like textbook. Or you see math has a $15,000 increase, and that, that's a, a new, entirely new curriculum that's been put in place, you know, that we're trialing this year and, and expanding into next year. So those are, those would be the newer costs, the textbooks and things like that. Like AP textbooks had to be updated in several areas. Because of changes with the AP programs, you know, those, those textbooks are anywhere from $150 to $175 each. And then there are workbooks attached, excuse me, workbooks attached to those. So there's, some of those costs come from that, but much of it was due to the realignment. So it looks like there's a huge increase, but it's really just pulling the numbers down to.
Yeah, I, I looked at your overall budget, so I was looking at that. So I just, I know things were changed, so I just kind of was looking at a couple of those things.
Absolutely.
Now, you talked about the inability to meet building and facility needs as outlined in the accreditation report. Do you have any idea of what kind of money is needed to get that to meet the needs? I'm just curious if you have any ballpark, or you have no idea?
I would.
Timeline even.
I would say I, I, I wouldn't put a number out there.
Okay.
It really, it really will depend on a number of things, depending on what we look at. If you look at science labs, for instance, that's, that's a big deal. That's a huge expenditure. If you look at state averages, our, our science labs are way too small, under, under equipment. You know, not enough equipment, not enough up-to-date equipment. Furniture is water, gas, piping, all that. That's, that's really, becomes a renovation project, rather than let's buy some stuff and put it in the room. Things like the, the track, in the next probably three years, the MIA won't let us host track events at our, at our site because of the condition of the track. So that at some point will have to be addressed. There are things related to the roof and leaks that are now appearing all over the building in various spots. And our maintenance guys, thank you for responding, respond instantly and try and get them patched up and cleaned up. But, you know, it's, it's really a number of items. When you start to look at, in the theater, part of that theater was unfinished when they did the renovation, and it's probably the most important part, the dimmer switchers, switches and the lighting system. Those things all will show up in various places over the 10-year budget for capital and through the maintenance budgets. So we're looking at furniture, we're looking at equipment. It's a, it's a, it's a huge compilation of things that need to be addressed. But you can do it over multiple years. It's just one of the, one of the pieces of the puzzle becomes that accreditation, where there are six foundational standards that you have to meet. And one of them has to do with your facilities and meeting the needs of your teachers and your students. And right now, our teachers took the approach, if you read our, our report, our self-reflection report, our teachers took the approach to say, yeah, we'll, we'll work with what we have. And the accreditation collaborative conference team came in, talked to our teachers, talked to the kids, went through the spaces and said, no way. So that's, that's really where, where that gets generated from.
And I know some of that's on our, we're talking about for the capital budget. And, you know, the roof, the track, the turf, all that, so, and the furniture, so, thank you.
In the after-school program for the student academic support, how many students do you project that you'd like to bring in?
Um, I think it depends, you know, on the circumstances. The number of students who might need this goes up and down throughout a quarter. But I, I would envision probably 12 to 15 students maybe needing this maximum at a time. Kids would enter and exit the program based on criteria. But the, the really important part of it is having a, you know, a fully licensed teacher thereafter school. That way, you have somebody who's fully versed in the curriculum, but also understands the organizational strategies that kids are going to need and can also do some outreach with parents as well.
And, and you don't see power block as being a useful time?
That's, that is a time for kids to get help. And certainly, all their teachers are available, and that's great, and their peers are there to help them. But having to do work after school at night at home is a reality of high school. And not every single kid can draw upon the same resources after 2:20. So I think that we need to extend those resources to those students. And having an after-school program, you know, as simple as it sounds, with some food at it and that's connected to our late bus program, I think is one way that we can really help kids who are, who are in desperate need of it.
Great, thank you.
I have questions for the middle school. I want to see, I know, I was looking at the budget briefly, just the different line items. And again, one of the things, two things that stood out to me that are high, and it could be because things got moved around, was professional development was really, as a huge line increase. And then also, the school nurse, a huge line increase. It said for the school nurse, 17.2 percent increase. Do you?
I don't have an answer on the school nurse one. We're not, you know, there isn't a change in the staffing. It could be a, a change in track and step, would be my guess. Or possibly licensure. I don't know if you can speak to that.
It's a, it's a lean change.
Yeah.
Contract.
And then the professional development, we got feedback from each of the departments on what they are, what they are planning on professional development. And based on curricular needs, this, these are, those are the numbers that they came back with.
Okay.
I think the other part to notice is, in addition to the percent, is what is the original dollar amount? So the dollar-to-dollar amount. It's really, it's a $2,282 increase in that PD line that, but because we're, we're budgeting such a small amount for each department, it, that's what generates that 15.89 percent increase. But it's really going from $14,300, that was approved in FY 20, to $16,600 and change for FY 21.
Yeah, I was looking at increases that were a good amount. It wasn't like just a couple hundred or anything. It was, you know, increased by 45 percent. So it just seemed like a lot of money, or, you know, 251 percent on the professional development and some, and 100 percent, some of the cat, 130 percent in some of the categories. So, and maybe they didn't do any professional development in the past that much. I'm just looking at line items and the increase.
Part of that might be the reallocation of categories as well. We did have quite a few things moved into desk categories.
In this case, it's just that there was so little budgeted that even, you know, doubling, it might have been $500, like in the, in the case of PD for guidance. And then this year, we're projecting $1,900. But because it was such a small amount, it makes, the percent increase is 200-plus thousand, or 200-plus percent.
I'm going to ask it, because it is such a big number, 12 percent for the school budget. And I ask this respectfully. You all do an incredible job of educating our children. And I can say that for the last 20 years as a parent in the district. But we are responsible to the people in our towns. And 20 percent is huge, given our economic environment right now. And public education is under attack. If push came to shove, could you find some reductions without harming our, the level of education that you provide to our children? Is that possible with the budget that you have presented to us? And I, I just, maybe don't even answer that, just think about that. First time around. You don't, don't feel like you have to, but just know that it's out there, because as we know, this is public information and it's pushed back already, and we have to be responsible. But again, we have to keep, make sure that our children are educated at the level that, that we have done for years and decades. But again, being realistic about the fiscal, oh, problems that are facing both of our towns since of our lack of revenue.
Thank you, Michelle, for bringing that up, because yes, I think we, if you guys could come back to us to possibly think about some cuts that you can, because it's going to be really hard on the towns to come with that kind of budget. And it could, you know, if we don't have a pass budget, that means we go, come back in summer again to try and redo the budget. And right now, Wenham, in particular, is really, is over its levy limit. And they're going to have an override no matter what. And so when they see, and when we get over for the, just the budget, we'll have an override as well, that, you know, people are going to start looking like, what are we going to pass? Are we going to just fail it all? Reality of what's been going on in Wenham. It's been very tough, and it's getting tougher in Wenham. And, you know, and somehow, we're going to need to figure out, out of the box, how we can put together a budget sometimes. Even though we need this stuff, I agree, we need it. You know, if we could think about things, you know, what you would recommend to help us make this budget, process a little easier?
To the chair. I, I'm going to, I'm going to say I'm speaking for myself, but I would bet my colleagues would say the same thing. We really spend a lot of time talking about the fiscal responsibility piece of budgeting. But we also felt that it was important for the community to see the bigger picture of what's happening within our schools, the deterioration that continues to go unaddressed, and some of the issues that we're, we really aren't sure how to address without some, some outside intervention maybe. But the, the importance of budgeting for all of us, and it's, you sit in the room with these guys as we toil through numbers and cringe, just like all of you did, when that final number came out. And then, you know, look at the realities of our responsibility to our communities. And we understand that we, this, this is not a solid number. We are, we are not, we don't have blinders on, we really understand. But we felt it's important to, for people to see, you know, what's happening within the school system and see some of the things, some of the challenges. And certainly, the, the special ed piece has been a challenge that we all own. And I think it's important to know that and state that, that this, these increases in special ed are unprecedented. And, you know, we're going to have to look differently at the way we do some things, so that we can meet those needs and still come in at a reasonable budget for our communities. But the people sitting at these tables really spend a lot of time and really cut through a lot of angst together to try and, to try and, you know, have those difficult conversations. So we really do understand what your, what your needs are as, as people representing our communities. And, and, you know, certainly not walking away from this. This is, there's some hard work to be done in the next couple of weeks, and we understand that. And I think everybody's here tonight to, just to make sure that, so people know that we're all in it together, and we'll work together to figure it out.
I appreciate that. I mean, I just kind of went over some of the categories in the schools, I guess. And you have the lowest percentage increase, so I, I appreciate. And I know everybody put together thoughtful budgets. And, you know, it's trying to figure out how we're going to present this final budget. And I personally don't feel comfortable with this high of a budget to bring it to the town.
So part of what we hope to gain over the next two days, once you've had a chance to hear from each of the principals and each of the department heads, is some direction, because budgets are full of choices. There's always places you can reduce, there's always, there's, and there's always implications to those reductions. But what we feel as the, as the leadership team, and I think Eric said it quite nicely, is that it's our moral and ethic responsibility to share with you and the community what our needs are. And we have left many things out of the budget, knowing that, you know, everything can't happen all at once. But the more we, the more we neglect solving some of these problems, the bigger the problems are going to get. And, you know, it's our hope, we call this a correction year, because we, we believe that if we put some of these things in place, it will bring us back to a better, a more normal state. But just, you have the perfect storm of things happening this year with the budget deficit, with our expanding student needs for specialized programming, and our need to address some of our, our facility needs. So the hope is that you'll hear all of the conversations, and then, you know, we'll culminate with some direction. And then, of course, we all stand ready to, to make reductions. We knew that going into the tentative presentation, that this wasn't going to be the final number. So any other questions about the middle school or high school specifically?
I have one question, and I really don't want to ask it, because it just seems so silly.
Trust your instincts.
The media and communications lab. Have we thought about trying to work out a new deal with HW CAM?
So last year, we ran into the issue of trying to gain access to the studios. When I first, when I first arrived seven years ago, we were able, we had a news program, and we had kids in there for class. Over time, that diminished as the kids who were requesting that, that number diminished, and more in the, in the arts, the, the fine arts classrooms increased. So that was a shift, so that teacher who was also works for HW CAM ended up shifting into the fine arts classrooms, teaching those expanded classes. So over time, there hasn't been a huge draw, until last year, we started getting new numbers. And we have availability with one of our other fine arts visual arts teachers who could go in there and use the media lab. We requested use and access to the equipment as outlined in the contract between the district and HW CAM, and were denied outright to use any equipment or to have another teacher in there. And as you know, through those conversations, Jeff Sands ultimately gave notice for them to move out of the building. And in And in some ways, it's a space that we can use at the high school and take full advantage of fairly quickly. And it also gives us an opportunity to look differently again at our programs and our offerings and what we can do for our kids. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's an interesting dilemma. I never, I didn't think they would say, have an outright no, but that's how it kind of ended up in the, in the final stages.
Yeah, see, I knew the answer to that. That's why I really didn't wanna ask the question, but I just thought that it's sort of floating out there that anyone who's paying attention might. Plus, I, I'm a graphic designer, so I actually know $130,000 for a lab is pretty cheap, and all the things that you can do with that, once you get in there, so.
And it also turns to meet the needs of our journalism program. We started journalism a couple of years back. It's starting to kind of blow up a little bit, too. Online newspaper, which they do a fantastic job. Check out the general consensus. But those two now will marry well in the program, the communications program, which will, in, in, I think it'll enhance some of our kids' skill sets as they go forward.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of return on investment there, so.
It's huge.
Yeah.
And although some of these things are not in the budget, we will continue to seek alternative funding sources, whether through grants or other sort of funding opportunities. So we're still hopeful that even though we haven't put it in, in the tentative budget, that we might be able to make some of these things happen for our kids. Okay, so we did have a brief break.
Sorry, Dr. Oh. I didn't really have a question, but more of a comment and a thank you, something Principal Havi mentioned, along with Ms. Lovell, Assistant Principal Lovell, Principal Tracy, Assistant Principal Medegony. I appreciate the creative use of space that you're using in the buildings, without little and no cost. You're finding spaces where students can collaborate. It's such a life skill. And finding those, even those little breakout spaces, the, the countertops and the, in the multipurpose room, the table under the, under the stairs, the pad out back, you know, the seating, the high-top tables around. I, I think that's fantastic, because students need to learn that skill of collaboration. That's a 21st century skill, and that's little and no cost, and it's smartly using what we have already. So I appreciate that. In fact, it goes to the, the elementary schools as well. I see that in the elementary schools as well. So I wanted to say thank you for that. Also, thank you for mentioning civics, the civics program, and how important that is, and revamping the World Studies Program from the old, old, 100-year-old model of the way we look at things, to a new, teaching everything in isolation, but more interdisciplinary learning. So I appreciate that. I just wanted to comment on that, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions?
I have something on the agenda. I just want to see what happened with the agenda on student services. Got striked out, and instead, it's curriculum and instruction. Do we know that 48 hours in advance?
We did not know that. There, our Director of Student Service had a family emergency, so she'll be joining us tomorrow, and we just switched curriculum and student services.
Could we possibly make it the curriculum instruction? I wasn't ready to talk, talk about it. I'd like to table that. I just don't feel like we had the anticipated 48 hours.
Yeah, we didn't know 48 hours ago, but certainly, if you'd like to do that, we may need to then extend the time tomorrow night.
Stacy, would it make sense for me to present the information tonight, but then I'd be available? I'll be here tomorrow night as well, so if you, after hearing the presentation, had additional questions tomorrow night, I could do that. I'm just concerned about the length of tomorrow night's presentation, if we, if we make that switch. But I'm more than happy to be available to continue to answer questions tomorrow night, if that helps with the scheduling.
That would help. And will, should we get the student services tomorrow night then?
You already, yes, yeah. Stacy will be here to present, but you already have the slides and everything in, in your, in the online resources that were shared on Sunday.
Okay, I don't see it. Okay. And will she be at the beginning of the night or the end of the night?
I believe we have her scheduled at the end.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Are folks feeling like they need a break, or are we ready to transition to elementary? Sounds like some, some might need a break. Okay, why don't we take a 10-minute break, and we'll come back at seven, um, 6:43.
So, all right, we are back at 7:44, 6:44, I'm sorry.
Okay, up next, we have the elementary principals presenting. Each of them are going to look at the elementary schools through a phase-level lens and highlight different aspects of our return on investments, what's in this year's budget, and some of our unmet needs. So I will turn it over to Principal Shettyak from Winthrop.
So this year's budget has allowed us to support 842 students in 42 classrooms across our three elementary schools at the pre-K to 5 level. This year's budget allowed us to add the additional kindergarten teacher at Winthrop that allowed us to keep the kindergarten class sizes less than 24, and we're currently at about 21 and 22, with Cutler having about 19 in their kindergartens. And we hired that teacher and opened that classroom late in August. So we kind of made do with what we had, and we put together a really great program, I think. And then we also, in, at the, at the end of October, we opened an additional preschool classroom at Winthrop that is meeting the needs of the children who have turned three since the start of the school year, to meet the needs of students on IEPs, and also to allow us to provide service to additional peers in those classrooms. We, one thing to note, and we've, it's been mentioned a couple of times, is the additional enrollment at the elementary level. We had 21 new students that, not counting kindergarteners, who came into the three elementary schools this summer. So we've also added those numbers into our, into our services. It's also been mentioned that special ed is a big portion of our budget. And at the three elementary schools, we're supporting students through our language-based classrooms. There's currently two at, housed at Cutler. We have the intensive learning program at Winthrop. I have two classrooms there, and we have the Castle Program, the Center for Academic and Social Learning. There's one classroom there. And then each of our schools has a therapeutic program and moderate special ed programs. So we are servicing all of our special ed students, and as we spoke about, the earlier we can provide services, the better we off we are in trying to keep those students in district. And it's kind of, if we spend some money now, we'll save some money later. So we wanna make sure that we're really making sure that the students are supported, and that we've got adequate staffing and adequate space to provide the services we need for those students. And the other thing that this budget has allowed us to do this year is to And the other thing that this budget has allowed us to do this year is to continue professional development for our teachers. We've sent, uh, new, all of our elementary teachers have been trained in responsive classroom, and we're making sure that we're sending our new teachers to that program. In November, we brought all the new elementary teachers, as well as some guidance counselors and some specialists, and the three principals went to a one-day responsive classroom workshop where we were able to get some good strategies to support social emotional learning and creating good classroom communities. We are in our second year of Investigations Three Point O Mathematics. Christine Foscher is continuing to support teachers in the implementation of that. We're in our third year of STEM Scopes Science, and then we're in our first year implementation of Teachers College Unit of Writing, Writing Units of Study, and Sue Steibell has been supporting that program. Teachers participated in face-to-face program at Teachers College this summer. Sue also ran an, a professional development series in the summer with teachers, and there have some, been some teachers who have done some online training around the writing units of study also.
I feel like we have the most on this slide with additions to our budget, and we're very aware of that. As Julie talked about, kind of shifting the tide and adding incremental investments, I think this is where you're going to see some of the decisions that all the administrators felt were important from all three levels, really feeling like if we started to be proactive and start to build some supports into our, for our younger students, we're going to see the, the tide turn on this, you know, really difficult situation we're finding ourselves in, in meeting the needs of all our stu-, of all of our students as they grow through our schools. So we have not been budgeting for a seventh kindergarten teacher. This is the second year, second year in a row, almost every year we've needed seven kindergarten teachers, like Carolyn said, we had to add that into the budget this August. This year, we've decided to be responsible for the numbers that we see coming up, especially with those pre-kindergarteners. We know kids are in the district right now, and they're coming through. Having that seventh kindergarten teacher allowed us to keep class sizes below twenty-four. We've also been asking for full-time teaching assistants at kindergarten, it might not have made it out of our central office requests, and, and to you, but since two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, I have been writing those requests with the other elementary principals every year to say, "We really need a second adult in every kindergarten classroom." For the past three years, we've been fortunate to be able to fund those half-time teaching assistants, they're not there all day, but for half of the day, for the academic portion of the day, we've been able to have a teaching assistant funded by Title One. Unfortunately, this year, Cutler didn't qualify for Title One funding, so we do not have teaching assistants in our kindergarten classrooms at Cutler. So we tried to make our class sizes slightly smaller, it's still eighteen, nineteen. Jesse Guidelines actually recommend a student-to-teacher ratio of eighteen to two in a kindergarten classroom. So by adding those teaching assistants, we're adhering to those student ratio guidelines, we're hoping to really be able to support kids as they come in and really learn to read. That's one of our themes that we're seeing, that we, a problem we need to solve, is helping all of our students learn to read, and we feel like if we start to really invest in our youngest students, we're going to see some of those struggles that we see at the upper grades fade away if we're helping address them right away when they come in. In addition, we're asking for some new literacy funds this year to replenish our kindergarten through fifth grade classrooms. Independent reading is something that's really important, it's part of that literacy block for all of our students, and being able to make sure that they have appropriate books in their hands from day one in our kindergarten classrooms right on through to grade five, to have interest, titles that interest them, books that are not falling apart, and books that are appropriate for their level, lots of different types of books, nonfiction, fiction, all different kinds, a re-, of, just a real range for all of our readers. We're looking to invest in some new resources for every single classroom across the district. So when you see our literacy line item, you're going to see a big increase there, that's something that we're being really intentional about. We're also looking for some science literature. When we brought in STEM Scopes a few years ago, we knew one of the things that we were missing, especially in those primary classrooms, were really rich literature resources to be able to use to enhance the science lessons. So we're looking for some funding to help put some more science resources into the classrooms as well. At Cutler, we have a language-based classroom program that is actually two rooms with three full-time teachers, two teaching assistants, and we service kids grades two through five. We're looking for additional support next year, we have so many kids coming into the program. We need to be able to service them, and really specifically in their content areas, so math, science, and social studies. That's sometimes been teaching assistant-supported in the classroom, we really need to have a special ed teacher with those children all day long in the language-based classroom, and we need to have enough staff members to be able to do that. Four grade levels is a, a big span, and those are our kids that are struggling to read the most in the district, we're trying to give them the most intensive interventions so that by the time they leave elementary school, they've got some strategies that they can really rely on. A safety issue over at Bukeur is where we also house all of our elementary performances, so risers are something that Ben has identified as a real safety need over here, and if you've come to our chorus or band concerts, we have them here in the Bukeur Gymnasium, and we feel the need to, to have those safe performances, we ask to have those come into the budget this year. And I just can't say enough about having a school resource officer. I didn't know what a resource it would be, I've been here a long time, but I use Ken almost daily to support our kids, to support our families, and support our staff. We have lots of issues ranging from safety issues to just becoming a mentor to students. I rely on him quite a bit, just like Eric said, I'm talking to him at night, I'm saying, "Hey, I've got a situation in the morning, can you be here to help me?" And just to have somebody, it's, it's a much bigger deal to have to call the police station and say, "I need some he-, some help," that's a way different dynamic than having somebody who's already on our team come in and say, "Can you help me diffuse the situation? Can you help me get some information? Can you help me investigate this a little bit?" It's just a completely different feel for that partnership, and I cannot express enough how much I appreciate his support this year. And I really didn't know what I was missing until I had it, and now I can't imagine never having that, because it really does just bridge kind of all of our services together to help us support families. This is not part of our budget, but part of the capital improvement budget, some of those security updates are really vital in our, in our buildings. The entry system in its, in and of itself, just a key pass system, a card system for teachers to gain access to the building, it seems like a small thing, but it's, it's a security thing. It's also making sure that we've got safe access, if a card gets lost, we can turn it off, it's not a missing key, it's an easy way to get on and off the playground when you've got children with you, you know, it's just something that is really, um, means a lot to the teachers in terms of feeling safe in the building.
And we continue to have some unmet needs at the elementary school, but as we looked at our budgets and what we were looking for, this is kind of what comes up as our not top-of-the-priority list. So we, along with all the other schools, continue to have some facility update needs. Our space limitations really hinder our ability to add programming. Stacy, you had talked about, you know, do we have the ability to add programs to keep some of our students in the district? And one of the things that becomes tricky is where do we put them? As Carolyn alluded to, we have special education, other related surfaces, services that are happening in parts of the building that were not designed for instruction, so glorified closet spaces. You know, we are making use of every space that we have, but as we want, as we have the need to expand, we need more spaces to do that into. In addition to that, we have some accessibility needs. Looking at this school in particular, we have fifteen exterior doors, and two of them are handicap accessible, and that does not include the front door, which is tricky here. We are looking at the LIPS training for primary classroom teachers. This is an up-to-date phonics instruction training that, as we look at the increasing reading needs of our students, making sure that all of our primary teachers have up-to-date and specialized training to, to meet the needs of our students. We're looking at additional compensation and training for our specialized teaching assistants. We have teaching assistants who are working with some of our most at-risk students here in the district, and making sure that they have adequate training to be able to do the things that we need them to do. And also looking at, do we, in order to remain competitive, do we need to have additional compensation for assistants who might be helping students with toileting issues? It's a very different kind of job than just doing academic support, so making sure that we have, that we're treating those folks fairly. We'd also like in the future to be thinking about some more advanced responsive classroom training. We've talked about bringing that to all of the classroom teachers and to the specialists, and beyond that basic training, there is a week-long summer institute that we'd like to have available to teachers who would like to do that. And finally, we still have a few teaching assistants that are currently funded through grant funding. That is a little bit unpredictable, a little bit unreliable, from state and federal sources, and making sure that those staff members are supported by our local funds to ensure that they are definitely on board and ready to go when the school year begins to meet, to meet the needs of our students.
So before we transitioned to curriculum and assessment, I'll give, I'll give you just a minute to jot down your thoughts, questions, things you were wondering about or noticing from the elementary presentation.
Jen mentioned that the security is part of the capital improvement plan, but do all three elementary principals feel the same way about the security issues at the school, schools?
Yes.
At both, um, staff and student, student and staff?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Sad, sad, but true.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and hear Peggy's presentation, and then we'll have time for general Q and A at the end.
So like with the other presentations, starting off with what's going well within the district, so in the fall, I'd come before you to talk about, we did it a little bit in a different way this year, I came and talked to you before the MCAS results were released, so that we could talk about how one interprets them, what the new accountability system looks like, et cetera, but I've never formally come back to present that data to you, we released that more in a publication rather than in a presentation this year, but we had really amazing jumps in our performance this year, so there is a new accountability system that measures our performance on MCAS achievement and growth, and some other variables like student attendance, and specifically at the high school, things like course completion and graduation rates and advanced coursework. So when we look at the improvement targets that the state had set for us in the 2018 year, which was the first year that we had that new accountability system, the district was meeting sixty-seven percent of its improvement targets. In 2019, we met eighty-eight percent of our improvement targets, so twenty-one percentage point increase with all the work that we've been doing around curriculum alignment and professional development and increasing supports for students. So really good news about the payoff for the work that the district has been doing in terms of approving, improving student achievement. We have an opportunity that's actually going to begin tomorrow, the Essex County Learning Community Grant is something that we had learned about in the spring. This is going to be the second cohort, so it's, the Tower Foundation, along with the organization that is supporting this particular grant, is looking to bring together different districts within Essex County to collaborate on some of the common issues that we all have, and how we're supporting students escalating special ed needs, this is not unique to Hamilton one of them, and how people could go about doing that. So when we applied, we applied under sort of the, the desire to improve our multi-tiered systems of support, so we can better support all of our students and our special ed students as well. And so tomorrow, we are starting on that. We have thirteen members of the district who will be part of this cohort that will last two years, we'll be able to access high-quality professional development and really each other's expertise in thinking about how we can best support students, so we're excited about launching that tomorrow. So in terms of the return on the investment of what we have in, in the FY20 budget, this picture in the background here is our new teacher cohort from this year, from New Teacher Orientation. One of the things that is supported under sort of my line items of the budget is the mentoring and induction program, and research has shown that the teacher is the number-one variable in student achievement. So the more we support our teachers to do their best work, the more we're ultimately supporting our students. So we provide New Teacher Orientation, a comprehensive two-day program over the summer. Every teacher who is new to the district, or any staff member who's new to the district, is assigned a mentor that meets with them weekly, and we also have group meetings that take place throughout the year. Mentors receive training, and we have resources for mentors as well, and in the second year, all of our new teachers go through the Studying Skillful Teaching Course, the Research for Better Teaching, which has been around for decades, it really is the gold standard for thinking about instructional practices. So it's a way of inducting all of our teachers into best practice and having a common language as a district around what we're looking for in classrooms. In terms of our professional development line item supports various content area and also skill level professional development, so one of the things that we did this, this year is provide some AP training. Every time we have a teacher who is new to an AP course, they, we typically send them to a one-week summer institute, and we also have, had some changes that have occurred in the AP curriculum guidelines. So last spring, sort of surprisingly, the College Board released a whole bunch of changes to a number of courses. So at this point, we're needing to provide our AP teachers with some additional time for curriculum revision and also training to support those changes. We also have a membership with Primary Source, we've belonged to that organization for a number of years, and they really help us with, with global studies in general. So social studies teachers take advantage of that, but it's also really great for world languages as well, and that is helpful to us right now as we're aligning to the new social studies framework and also the new state requirements around the civics projects, and that organization has been helpful to us in that. And then summer curriculum development, we have a pool of money that we have every summer in order to be able to fund teachers to work collaboratively. They are either developing new courses, or they may be refining current courses, but it's to keep our curriculum up to date and to make sure that we're offering the best learning experiences to our students. So part of what's happening this year with our professional development line item is given the, our current budget deficit and our need to curtail the budget, we haven't necessarily cut back on our professional development, but we've moved those charges over to the Title II A grant. So the Title II A grant is a grant that we receive, it's a federal grant administered by the state specifically for professional development, and it, it, even though like the FY20 grant is actually good for FY20 and FY21, so we can typically spend that money over two years. In order to curtail funding, because we do need to close this year's budget gap, I've been putting most of the charges over there, which means that in FY21, we're not going to have as much of a reserve. So I just want to make that clear, that's another part of the budget challenge that we have, is that we are draining down our various resources in order to cover our current costs, and then that just sort of means that we'll have less to work with in the future. But some of the things that we have paid out of that grant this year is having Will Richardson, some of you were present for his talk on opening day, and we also had him back in October, and that's part of our larger beliefs about learning discussions, which are related to the strategic blueprint, which we've been talking to you about in the workshops all fall, and really in setting a refined mission and vision for the district around modern learning. Using Data Solutions, we will be starting our work with them, or we already started our work with them, but they'll be coming for the first time with teachers at the end of this month. So one of the things you had asked about earlier this evening was, what are we doing proactively to be taking a look at what's happening with our students and their needs and our special ed costs? And one of those things that we're seeing is really early literacy and how our students are doing in their reading development. So we've decided to form a literacy data team, and we'll be involving all, a representative from each school, K to three, as well as special ed, our reading specialists, all of our principals, Stacy Music and myself, we'll be all working together to study this problem deeply with the help of these two consultants. We've worked with these consultants in the past, in fact, they trained this district a number of years ago in the using data process, but it's helpful to have sort of outside people helping you as you think deeply about challenging problems. And so that's something we're going to be doing throughout the spring, and we anticipate that this will continue into next year as well, and that it will generate a really deep understanding of what, why are we seeing these types of results, what's going on, how can we better intervene to help students? There's a lot of research that suggests that reading difficulties, many of them can be prevented or lessened in severity when you receive the right interventions at the right time. So we want to understand what's going on with our students better so that we can intervene in the best possible ways and to resolve some of the literacy issues that we're seeing in our school district. On the next one is the illustrative mathematics curriculum, so we piloted that for the first time last year at the middle school, and as Craig referenced in his presentation, we're really seeing a difference in the quality of the conversations happening in the classroom, the types of conceptual thinking that students are doing, this is a really highly rated curriculum, and we have expanded a pilot of that into our high school this year, and so we needed to bring in trainers to work with the high school and also to be working with a new middle school teacher that we have, so that she's been brought up to speed on that curriculum. And then we are implementing the Teachers College Units of Study for Writing at the elementary level in K to five this year, so we sent Sue to a coaching institute in the fall to think about how to best support teachers as they implement those units for the first time. So in terms of the FY21 budget, it is mostly, in my line items, a level service budget. We really haven't asked for much outside of what we have asked for in the past, it's more how we're choosing to allocate that in order to meet our needs. The one thing that is an increase is looking to have that is an increase is looking to have regular professional development once a month on our Wednesdays for our teaching assistants. So they're people who tend to be paid only to be here during contractual hours. And what that means is that unless we're pulling them away from kids, we don't have an opportunity to be working with them. And our teaching assistants are assigned to support our sort of most needy students, shall we say, and the students who have the greatest needs in the district. And how do we help train those teaching assistants to be able to implement the various interventions that we need them to do for students? So we think that's really, really important, and it would have a really huge return on investment to have those teaching assistants have the opportunity for more training around the work that they're doing with students. And then thinking about professional development, some of the things that we would like to do around professional development next year is related to curriculum frameworks, identified student needs, and our district goals. So you've heard a theme throughout this evening with the various principals, talking about social emotional learning, and really how do we meet sort of the needs of the whole child? We're seeing a lot of issues around anxiety with students. And so Lynn Lyons is an expert who really specializes in working with schools and families around anxiety and how you ameliorate that. And then we also, as we're bringing new teachers into the district, we want to make sure they have the same training that we have given to other teachers. So what ended up happening, we have had the responsive classroom approach in the district for many years, but it had been about a decade since we had trained teachers. So last fall, we brought responsive classroom in to train everybody who was new to the district since we'd last trained. So we had the entire staff up to speed on responsive classroom. And so as we now bring new teachers on, every year, we're going to need to send the new teachers to responsive classroom to make sure that we're maintaining that. And that really supports social emotional learning on a daily basis in schools. In terms of literacy, we anticipate continuing to send some teachers to the writing institutes that are offered in the summer for deeper learning to support our writing instruction. And then whatever comes out of our literacy data team, we anticipate that there will be some needs for training around reading as well. We'll know more, once we've been through the data process, to know exactly what that will be. We'll continue to need to provide some AP training. The high school is interested in looking at something called visible thinking, which is really working with students around habits of mind that support deeper content learning. And then again, as we bring new teachers onboard, we're really going to need to train them in the curriculum resources to make sure that they have the same background as teachers who have been previously trained. And there are needs throughout the year around other content-related workshops. And then we anticipate continuing these conversations about beliefs about learning. One of the people that we've considered having to the district is Megan Power, who is one of the founders of Design 39, which is a school we've been looking at as kind of a model for some of the practices. Some of the other things that the FY21 budget allows us to do is to continue our high-quality mentoring and induction program to support teachers new to the district. We have a few memberships that support curriculum instruction, like Primary Source, but also the CSDN and ASCD organizations, which provide a lot of resources that support learning. And then summertime for curriculum development, again, this is ongoing every year. Eric had mentioned earlier that there were a few things in the Niasca accreditation report that are goals for us to work on, and one of those is to complete our curriculum documentation. So we need time specifically for the high school to be able to work on that. And we also, there are new frameworks in the last year or so in social studies, fine arts, and pending this year, health and wellness. So anytime a new framework comes out, you do need to align to that new framework and make sure that we're meeting the standards. And then we have two new courses that we're looking to offer at the high school next year, Mandarin Five and Biotechnology. So we'll need to be developing the curriculum for those courses as well. And in terms of unmet needs, this is really echoing what the elementary principal said as well, but it falls under the realm of professional development. So as I said, last year, we brought in training for anyone who had not previously been trained in responsive classrooms so that we had a common baseline. But those teachers in our district who have been trained in responsive classroom, it's over a decade. So it's really time for a refresher. There had been updates, you know, to the way responsive classroom operates in the last decade as well, and thinking about making sure that everybody is really thinking about this in the same way and has had a recent experience with training. That's why we would like to bring in that advanced responsive classroom training. And then the LIPS training that they mentioned. So one of the common reasons for reading difficulty is a lack of phonemic awareness. And the LIPS program is a highly regarded and effective program for addressing phonemic awareness issues in students. So we think that that training would be really beneficial for our primary teachers and also our special education teachers who work with students. So that's another thing that we're going to need to put off for now, but we think that training would be very valuable in addressing our early literacy issues.
Okay, now we will answer any questions, entertain any comments, or any noticeings that you have about the elementary school's budget and curriculum and instruction.
May I make a comment? The importance should not be overlooked of having small class sizes and having that additional teacher in the classroom so you can make smart groupings, do individual instructions. I'm currently on a team right now, and there's five of us, 50 kids. But if we weren't there to support each other and bring into small groups based on needs, smart groupings, kids would be left behind. And addressing these issues early will have longer-term benefits and save, lead to greater student success and also save the district money at the same time.
That's our hope, and that's luckily a belief that I think we all share as an administrative team. And that's something that was really important in our talks was, you know, how do we really maximize resources so that we could, that benefit our youngest students so that we are helping them as soon as they walk through the door? They can't tie their shoes. They can barely blow their nose. And they need to learn to read. And having that many kids in a room is really difficult with just one adult.
And I know this has been a priority for Dr. Kuchenberger as well, address the needs earlier to have the long-term benefits.
Absolutely.
I'm going to ask again, or Michelle Horgan had started the asking for middle school, high school, other departments, but I know you've thought hard about your budgets, but if you could think about things that you can cut out of your budgets, where would it be so to help us and that we don't have to say, nope, this is cut and you may want it? I know, it's just very hard to bring that back to the towns, that high of a budget. It's just, I know in one in particular, it's unrealistic. And they're going to say, when is it going to stop? And I know we need everything that you're asking for, and I appreciate you've been very thoughtful in your budgets, but if you could come back to us with some cuts because we cannot, I can't realistically bring this kind of budget to the towns and be good about it. Because, you know, it's taxpayers that we're representing. And so if we can just think about where we can make those cuts and help us, you know, think of things that you can cut to help us on this, because I know we need it. I can't say that enough. I know we need it. But can we look outside the box? Is there a creative way?
Yeah, I completely appreciate your sentiments. Like, we understand that. I wanted to let you know that this year, we built our budgets together. We went through a little bit of a different process that we haven't done in a long time, but we really tried to build our budgets equitably, really looking at the number of kids in our buildings, how expenses were being, you know, made across different line items. And we really tried to line our budgets up. And so that's the first step. And then I think when we're looking at cuts, we need to do that as an entire district, not just by each DAC, but really, how do we do this together? And that's really what I hope our work is in the future.
I agree too. That's why I'm asking, as we've looked at everybody, I would ask, you know, we all kind of come together and figure out where those cuts can come from. And I mean, I know personally, I've asked for, you know, as a sideline, is asking for the maintenance. Where's the maintenance? We haven't had maintenance. And I know all the schools need work on facilities and maintenance. And, but still, I mean, you put it back in the budget, that's a huge budget for everybody. But, so at what stick, you know, till everything falls apart? So I'm just saying, if you could help us make it easier as a whole, we've all worked, I mean, you've all worked together collaboratively, if we can, you know, come together too, to help us because...
Yeah, and I think that was a piece that Eric spoke to earlier, that trying to build more transparency into the process this year of us coming together and saying, this is what we need, and it's going to put us at a number that makes everybody in this room nervous. And we know that. But we want this to be an open conversation of if we're going to bring this number down, then let's all be honest about what's in it and what's not in it, rather than coming in with a more reasonable number, but no one knows what we're missing, and having those open conversations about what's happening and what's not. You know, we are in the business of spending other people's money. And we do have a responsibility to the taxpayers, to the residents. But in an effort to bring more transparency to the process, let's have that conversation about if we can get that number down, what are we losing? So that everyone knows and everyone is making the most informed decision.
Well, that was sort of going to be my question, which is sort of the opposite of Stacy's, and looking at what the, looking at the unmet needs, sort of the curriculum instruction sort of triggered me on this, because you actually put a price tag on there, which is nice to see. You know, if we hit these unmet needs in each phase at the high school, at the middle school, at the elementary schools, what are we already cutting out of the budget? Right? I think that's an important thing that people need to see, right? If we could get some numbers to actually look at, you know, because, yeah, this is a tough number to see, but it's also, we have to realize that we are righting the ship. And sure, no one likes bringing 13%, but there's also some, in order for this to stop going year over year, at some point, you have to level, you know, the decks in our playing field here. And I think that's what this is. But part of that is, we're still, you know, every department here is not getting everything that they want, that they need, right, to be effective. And that's really important to keep in mind as well, and keep in every single part of the conversation. Excuse me. So that's really what I wanted to bring up. And then the other thing too is, you know, just when, Ben, you had said, just sort of looking into local funding for the TAs and stuff, so you're not relying on the grants is, I just wanted to sort of reiterate that too, and not make everyone nervous that like, we're not going to be still looking for grants.
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course, yes.
Just not funding essential positions to them in that way.
Yeah, I mean, with that, I think about the kindergarten assistance that we've had in kindergarten classrooms for the last number of years, and the way that the calculations came out this year, that funding was not available to color this year.
Right.
And it wasn't available to us until after the beginning of the school year. So we had to start our kindergarten classrooms with just one teacher, and classroom teachers by themselves were trying to create classroom communities and routines and getting kids kind of school-ready, all by themselves with 21 five-year-olds. So it made it that much trickier to start the school year. And we were really thankful that we found great TAs and brought them back in, but it was a tough start.
And when they came back in, they're not full-time in the classrooms. They're shared across multiple classrooms.
Or leave, they leave at 11:30. So they're, kids are unsupported for the whole afternoon.
Jen, how many kindergarten classes do you have? Two or three?
I have two this year.
So there's two classes then without TAs?
Yes, there are.
Peggy, you mentioned an unmet need is the LIPS training service. Is that to replace an existing program, or is this something that you see a need then, that down the road, as Dr. Kuchenberger was saying, would help with those at a higher, as they move along the system?
So LIPS is not a program so much as it's an instructional approach. And so it's designed to support students' phonemic awareness. And so phonemic awareness can impact reading at any level, but it's particularly important at the primary grades where you're looking... So in other words, if a student doesn't develop phonemic awareness, then they're going to continue to have reading problems all the way throughout. But it's in those early grades, that's where we're really targeting that through instruction. And some kids, we have foundations, or we have various ways, and we have the Hagerty Phonemic Awareness Curriculum that we're using at the elementary. But sometimes students need a different approach. And the LIPS training is more dealing with gestures and other, like really looking at, I believe it's actual lips, so you're looking at like how the forms are, the words are actually being formed. And so it's a different instructional approach that helps students who aren't really gaining that through the traditional methods. It's a more intensive intervention that would allow students who are struggling to acquire those skills to acquire them. And if they don't have them, they will not become proficient readers, right? So it is a, it is an important need within our...
And it's an addition, not a replacement?
It is an addition. So we have some special education teachers who are already trained in LIPS, but not necessarily all of them. And our primary teachers have not been, classroom teachers have not been systematically trained in that either. So we think it would be another really important tool in their toolkit to work with students as an intervention.
And also a very important tool in helping us ensure that we're able to meet all of our students' needs right here in their home schools, so they don't have to go somewhere else to receive that kind of specialized instruction.
Right. And as Maureen reminded me, reading specialists as well would be included in that training. It wouldn't just be, so we'd be training everybody who's basically working with students in that level. So kind of what, to address this sort of larger question about the budget as well, I think one of the reasons why this budget is higher, part of it is, as Vinnie and Julie were explaining, we came into the year with a deficit, we have contractual obligations. Some of this is fixed. There's really nothing much we can do about that. And then there are other things that are choices, but they're choices that we're putting in strategically because we're trying to be proactive. So we're seeing escalating special ed costs, for example. And that's telling us that we need to do things differently in terms of meeting our students' needs. So there are pieces that we need to put into the budget in order to do that. And over time, we believe that we can turn that around, right? And we can actually start to see that we'll be lowering our special ed costs because we'll be doing a better job of meeting student needs. But we need an infusion of things upfront in order to be able to do that work. So could we cut those things? Yes, we could cut those things. And we could come in at a lower budget now. But what is the cost down the line if we don't actually become proactive and really try to address that and curtail, and really curtail the problems that we have within the district? We're going to continue to see those costs escalate. So that is, it really is a way of trying to sort of, we're talking about this as a correction year around the budget, like just in terms of trying to deal with the budget numbers. But it's also a correction year in terms of trying to think about how we solve our problems differently. And so it's, it is a lot of money. There's no question about that. And, you know, when I had to put my emojis up front, I've got little, you know, worry signs here because we know that these, we know this budget is a lot to ask. And Stacy, to answer your question about the budget, I think we know that this is really high. We're not, you know, confident that the community would support this either. We understand your anxiety around that. So what is the number? Because we've told you our needs. So you need to tell us more what that number needs to be, and then we have to get together and put our heads together and really figure out how do we get to that number, and what will those hard choices be? Because we didn't put anything in front of you that we didn't think that we needed.
I really appreciate what you said, Peggy. So to help the audience who are watching, to give you guys a sense of scale, there was a slide earlier, I wasn't here for it, but I know that's in the presentation. The operating budget for Butler, sorry, Butler, Buker, I'm reading Butler and Cutler at the same time, Buker and Cutler. For FY20, it's $2.2 million. Okay, so we're not talking about a lot of money here. Cutler itself is 2.7, Winthrop at 3.5, right? So the thing is up there, the miles over middle school, 4.4, and then the high school at 6.4. So on the sense of scale, it's not big. So any change you make will have dramatic impact. So I just want to make sure that people are aware. I mean, budgets are all about how you allocate and prioritize resources. And that's obviously what the school community needs to do, is to give direction about what we want to do. But also, we need to be able to present this to the public and say, this is how we feel the investment in our kids should be made by all the citizens, all the residents, and all the taxpayers in these two towns. So I just want to put that out there.
I think that's a really good point, and I appreciate you clarifying that. The other part is, if we were to overlay, remember, this is the FY20 budget that was approved. This is not our reality. This is not what, this was not the reality on July 1. And so if we were to overlay what the current reality is, those percent changes are going to look really different. Those dollar-to-dollar comparisons are going to look very different. And I don't know, maybe that's an exercise that's worth doing to help the community see it doesn't change the bottom line, so to speak, but it does, it does explain the why behind the ask. Any other questions for elementary or curriculum and instruction?
I had a question, not necessarily about elementary or curriculum, but actually for Eric. Can you, I know that last year... Can you, I know that last year you gave us, the school committee, a, an overview of the accreditation process. And can you just do a really brief summary of that? Because I'm kind of interested in, because all throughout, actually, there's a theme about, in the review that NEAS was doing, there's potential for not meeting the standards in order to be accredited. Losing accreditation is pretty severe. But I want to make, I want to sort of be aware of the timeline that the district has in order to get, for momentum to meet the standards. And so can you just give us an overview of the process and what, how much time is left to sort of address some of these issues?
Sure. The current process we are working under is the new process for NEAS and C. We're one of the early schools that has jumped into that process. It is initially, we start out in 2019, we do a self-reflection report, which we did all last year, and submit that to the accrediting agency. And in October, on October 2nd and 3rd, our collaboration, collaborative conference committee came, which are four volunteers that just come to our facility from NEAS. And they review our, our report, our own reporting. And then they spend two days checking out the realities of our own reporting. So they'll go into our classrooms, they'll interview, they interview teachers and administrators and students and parents to really figure out if we were honest with ourselves or if we, you know, if we were going down the right road or the wrong road. That's their, that's their charge, if you will. And that's the new piece of accreditation. That piece was not in the previous process. So the collaborative conference committee supported our process and our report, all except for one thing, the facilities area. So we anticipated not meeting a couple of the standards, knowing that we had time to get to that point. So over the next two years, this year and next year, we will work on the priority areas, the four priority areas that were outlined by the collaborative committee and by us in many senses. Three of the four were outlined by us in our own reflector. And then in fall of 2021, the committee comes back with a larger committee. That's called the decennial visit. And that group will go through with a fine-tooth comb, everything. They'll still specifically target our priority areas from the collaborative conference visit and start there and say, did you, you know, do the things you said you were going to do? So the goals that we set this year and next year. And then they'll look deep, more deeply into some of the other areas. They'll spend four days with us, Sunday through Wednesday. They'll go through the entire scope of school, both inside, extracurriculars, academic areas, everywhere. They will leave, send us a report, and that report will drive kind of the next 10 years, if you will. The process really, I think we'll end up spending a lot of time in the facility zone at that point. Because we realistically can't address some of the things that they're talking about in the next year and a half, two years. So they determine accreditation at that point. Once we receive the final report back that gets voted by NEAS, they will tell you whether you're accredited or not. We are currently accredited, we have been. I don't, I don't anticipate losing accreditation, so to say, but the, the reality of it is we could be put on, on warning and given a more strict timeline to get things done. And then that, that makes it a little more difficult. So that may add another two years. And what they usually do is two-year increments. Okay, we need you to do this, 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 and this. Over that two years, those are your goals. You clean that up and then they come back and review it again, so. The overall process is approximately 10 years. But it seems to kind of continue through that, depending on what you need to do. They will work with us. We have to show that we're making progress towards those priority areas. I don't, I don't anticipate any issues with that. Our staff works hard. Our district and, and school-level staff are really working to try and already get those things taken care of. So we'll do that for this year and next year. And then once the decennial visit comes, I think the only area that we'll have some issue with will be the facilities issue.
Any other questions? Okay, so remember that this is just part one. Vinnie and I will sort of wrap us up for tonight and give you a little preview as to what we're going to do tomorrow.
So just to give you an overview again, our FY21 preliminary operating budget, with everyone's presentations tonight, along with tomorrow night, we're looking at an FY21 budget proposal of 39.3 million, which is an approximate increase of 12.48%. After that, you remove your expense offsets of 1.8 million and your revenues of 4.4 million, and you're left with our net operating budget of 32.9 million. Again, roughly 2.3% of this is due to the FY20 budget deficit and another 1% is due to the IDEA grant. So those two amounts combined is approximately 3.5% of our 12.48% total.
Plus contractual obligations. Okay, so the other handout that you have tonight is the tool that we've given you, I think, a couple of times now, or at least one other time. This really shows you how the budget is built, starting with level services. Again, what, when we talk about level services, this includes all line item review and reallocation. Those were all those one-on-one meetings that we had together as a leadership team. I would say collectively, 100-plus hours of work in FaceTime and then the work that happens after the meetings. And then as you kind of go through and you see, the color quality's not great on this, I apologize for that, but you see then the retirement and personnel turnover reductions. We aren't anticipating a significant amount of retirements. In fact, we only really have one or two. And then we add in those required investments. These are the things that address student safety needs and/or compliance issues. This also includes mandates. So providing specialized service to students who have individualized education plans is not a choice. That is a mandate, and it's also what's right and best for students. That's, that shows up here in that pink area as well. And then we start to add our new investments from those pre-K-12 new investment conversations that we had together as a leadership team, where we together, over multiple meetings, decided what was the top priority. And we also decided what was the biggest bang for the buck, really looking at how can we be the very best stewards of our community's tax dollars and ensure that we're solving the right problems? And you'll see very clearly from the conversation tonight, but also here, that the kindergarten teaching assistance emerged as the number one priority in the district. Even though there's several other unmet needs, we collectively agreed that that was the number one priority. Followed by bringing on a 1.0 full-time equivalent licensed social worker that would provide social emotional support counseling to our students and also help connect families to community services. Because although we get to spend probably more time than most families with their children during the school day, we know that there's also a lot of other services that families need in order to completely care for the whole child. Our third priority is on the next page, and this is that after-school academic support program that Principal Menegony spoke about in terms of providing that supplemental support for students who need it, in addition to the other supports they receive during the day, a small investment. And we believe that we would have a big return on that investment. And then the fourth new investment that makes it into our proposal that you're seeing today, that you saw last weekend, that you're seeing today, is increasing our speech-language pathologist position from a part-time position to a full-time position. This has been impossible for us to fill this year. This is, these are services that are required to meet students' basic needs identified in their individualized education plans. And we've posted it and posted it again, and we haven't been able to fill it. Our hope is that by making it a full-time position, we'll be able to fill it. And also, we've recrafted the job description to include assistive technology services, which would be a reduction in, of a part-time position in our general budget. So again, trying to think as strategically as we can. And then you see that big bold red line. Those are all of the new investments that made it into the budget. Everything below the red line, you heard about tonight, or you'll hear about tomorrow in detail, that is not included in this budget. But to David's request earlier, we wanted to show you what would the impact be if it was included? How does it affect the, both the gross operating budget and the net budget? We stopped after number seven, just knowing that all of these things, we're not going to be able to make it, but you have at least the amounts of those other unmet needs right there for you, so you can get a sense of the scale of the requests that did not make it into the budget. So that's a tool. We'll continue to update as we go. Really what we're looking for from you, to Peggy's point, is some guidance, like what is the number that we think our community can support? And then we'll come back together as a team and start to make some recommendations and bring those back to subcommittee for conversation.
Vinnie, on that, on that last slide, is there any way you can come back and give us the budget to actuals for 19 and 20? And then show what the proposed for 21 is, please?
Sure. Yeah, we can do that. So the, the process continues. We have lots of important dates coming up. Of course, tomorrow night, we're together, that's not on this slide, for part two of this leadership team budget workshop. And then the capital subcommittee, this is really where we imagine a lot of the work is going to happen, is in that subcommittee meets on Tuesday, the 21st, at 7:00 PM, and, and also Tuesday, February 4th, at 7:00 PM. And these meetings happen in the superintendent's conference room. We have a joint meeting coming up with both towns. Both towns, the town manager, the town administrator, the FinComs, and I believe some board of selectmen might join us in those conversations, as they did in our first meeting. That's January 29th, right here, in the same room. And that will start at 7 o'clock PM. And I anticipate that we'll determine at that meeting whether we want to have additional meetings moving through the budget process. We have two public hearings, and we, they both will also happen here in the Bueker multipurpose room. Those are both at 6:30, and they happen just before school committee meetings on Wednesday, January 22nd, and then Wednesday, February 12th, which is the night of the final vote for school committee. And then, of course, the, the final milestone is the town meeting on April 4th. And so we'll keep reminding you of this and keep reminding the community of these dates. We really hope to have high levels of engagement. Happy to answer any questions that the community has about what's in the budget and what's not in the budget, so that everyone has ultimate clarity.
Julie, can you remind me when we do our final vote to approve the budget?
As a school committee? That is Wednesday, February 12th.
Okay.
And then in order for us to design a workshop that's going to work best for everyone, we would like to gather some pluses and deltas from today. So what are the things that went well? We do this at the end of all of our meetings. And what are some things you'd like to see changed? Again, this is so that we're making sure that we're maximizing our time together, and we're happy to make adjustments for tomorrow night based on your feedback. And leadership team, you can participate in this as well. Any pluses or deltas?
So quick question. On the 29th, have we taught, do the towns and, for the joint meeting, do they know and they're okay with these dates on the 29th?
Yep, we agreed upon that date at our last, actually, we, I sent out a doodle poll back in November after our first meeting, and this is the date that was determined. So that's been shared out for some.
Was it confirmed? Because there was some people who said, when is it?
As far as I know, it's been confirmed. I've been in communication with both the town manager and town administrator. We are meeting with them tomorrow, so I can verify that and just double check.
So I will forward that to board of selectmen, at least on the Wyndham side, and because it was a couple of the, that side, Wyndham side, that said they didn't know when it was.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. And also, the timeline was shared back in November, and that date was on the timeline as well.
It was, okay.
But I don't think we can over-communicate, because there's a lot of dates to remember and a lot going on.
And do you think possibly we could, I don't know if someone could ask Bill Melville about making it live tomorrow night, because tonight was not live?
This meeting wasn't?
It wasn't live. And so one of our school committee members who can't make it couldn't watch what was going on.
Okay, I'll look into that. I'm not sure.
I know that prior to the meeting, they were struggling with the YouTube feed, that that was something that, I don't know if it was Bill or someone else was over there.
I just, because I had asked at the break, like, could we get this live?
Yes, I think, I think that was the intention, and for some reason it wasn't working, and they were trying to get it up and were not successful.
Okay, yep, I will definitely follow up on that. Okay, so that, I'll put that as a delta for tomorrow, is make sure that it's live if we can. Anything else that worked well or you'd like to see changed?
I'd like to see, Peggy did it, unmet needs and the cost. I don't know if all of the other ones had the cost next to it, so that'd be interesting, just to see. And I think you also mentioned, which was great, having the actual FY20 budget, so we can compare it to 21, right, as opposed to budgeted?
Budget and actuals?
Is that possible to do in the 24 hours? Twenty-two hours?
For October 18 and 19, to add it to the slide? That's not hard. We don't have 20 actuals yet, but.
Because we're still in the process.
We're still in it. Yep, no, it's not hard.
Would, would FY20 projected, like current, current FY20 projections?
I could do the, from the last forecast we did in October, but I haven't fully completed the December one.
How much workload?
It's okay, no, it's an acceptable answer.
I think I can do it.
October, but fiscal year begins July, right? The high spending starts in September.
I gave you the forecast in October, though, so if you want the FY20 actuals, I can do it as of the forecast I gave you last time.
Right.
If it helps you guys.
If people want it. I'll just say, a couple months of actuals, in reality, isn't going to really provide a significant amount of value, because you still have.
You're going to be under it.
I mean, if we started all activity July 1, we would have, you know,
If everything was encumbered.
Two quarters worth of stuff. We really have like less than a quarter.
It's not worth, not worth the manpower.
Projections would be, I'm just saying that, but yeah, people, other people want it, you know, certainly don't. So I appreciated the level of information. I thought it was the right amount to digest for the public. I think when we get to the subcommittee, it'll be more interesting to get into a little more detail with the information that we've already been provided. But I think for public digestion, it was a good amount of information. So appreciate everybody's hard work in pulling it together. And it was a lot of, a lot of time, a lot of effort.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on that as well. You know, it really helps our position in, in getting things directly from, from y'all. And, and I know that anyone else who's like interested in, going to be looking at this is going to appreciate hearing it directly from the source, because, you know, we all know that everyone in this town is very tied to their individual schools. And, you know, as Jean pointed out, it helps to see things, both big picture and then breaking it down per school, to see really what we're working with. You know, and then having everyone in the room and just showing actively that we're all working together, I know it just paints a really nice picture. So, you know, thank you all for all the hard work you guys are doing.
Agreed.
And then Julie, I have to give you props for your clip art. You know, I appreciate your PowerPoint presentations. A lot of starving artists out there that need your support.
I just want to say thank you to the leadership team. There were several points tonight when I heard each of you step up and answer questions with confidence, and that makes me feel really good about our process and about the shared ownership of the budget. I think that you all deserve lots of commendations about your hard work and effort. I know this has caused you to have many, many more meetings than probably you would have liked to have, but I appreciate the clarity that you've been able to provide. So thank you all for that. Any other thoughts?
So, I mean, I just want to end again, I can't say enough about, I really enjoyed this little addition to the process this year. And going through a $39 million budget is a very complicated process. And it's one that most people don't understand. And even being privy to this board, you don't necessarily know how to go through a budget. And even being privy to this board, you don't necessarily know how to go through a budget like that. And really having it broken down like this makes it so easy to, easier to digest, I guess is a better way to put it, you know, for everybody, no matter how well-versed in, in creating budgets that you are. So this was really a nice addition. I think we're going to get, we're going to hear a lot of positive feedback from those not in the room right now. So thank you very much for putting this together.
Awesome. All right, well, if there's no other pluses or deltas, David, that concludes our portion of the workshop.
Thank you, everybody. I move to adjourn at 7:49.
Second second.
All those are family. Thank you for coming.
Second squared.
Is that fourth?
From 11 to like.
I'll see you tomorrow, Thursday.